Jews have a long tradition of praying for the welfare of the society in which they live. The earliest indication of this tradition comes from the prophet Jeremiah, who prophesied during the period when the ancient Israelites had been exiled to Babylonia from their homes in Israel. Living for the first time in a country which was not their own, they were counselled by Jeremiah to pray for its success and prosperity. Seek the welfare of the city and pray to God on its behalf, for in its prosperity you shall prosper. Since the 14th century, most Jewish prayer books have contained a prayer for good governance, in keeping with Jeremiah's injunction. There were certainly times and places when Jews lived under governments which had policies towards Jews which would have made it very difficult, if not impossible, for them to recite these prayers. We in New Zealand today are blessed to live in a democratic society which respects the rights of religious minorities.
So read the prayer, the traditional prayer, in Hebrew and English. Eloheinu ve'alohayavotenu kavelna berachamim et filatenum be'adap seju men shalpan.
Our God and God of our ancestors accept with mercy our prayer for our land and its government.
Harak ibar hateha al ha'aretz hazod, al nisa shofteha shotreha v'kideha, ha'oski be'zar chayi cibor ve'amunah.
Pour out your blessing on this land, on its mayor, city councillors and elected officials who work faithfully for the public good.
Koram ve'hukey toratecha habinan, v'shakta yacid keha lamaan lo yisuruhu, va'achseinu shalom ve'shalva osher, ho'chopish kol hayimim.
Teach them the laws of your Torah, enlighten them with the rules of your justice, so that peace, tranquility, happiness and freedom will never depart from our land.
Ana adonai ha'ehnu karuchot lekol basar, shelach rukhateha al kol tushvey ha'cenu v'tabain ha'amot ha'emnot ha'shonot ha'shokni ve'ahaba ve'chavoh shalom ve'raut.
God of all that lives, please bestow your spirit on all the inhabitants of our land and plant love, fellowship, peace and friendship between the different communities and faiths that dwell here.
Va'akor na libam kol shina ve'rayava kina, ve'hacharut le'mlot mosha nafesh b'naiha ha'metmari v'chavora, ve'hamish tukakim tukakim le'irota, ol le'fol ha'do'imim.
Uproot from their hearts all hate, animosity, jealousy and strife, in order to fulfil the longings of its people who aspire for its dignity and desire to see it as a light for all nations.
Ve'chen yihat zol milpaneha, sh'tehak cenu brach le'hol yoshveke ve'tashle b'naiem ve'utvcha utvichayim.
And so may it be God's will that our land be a blessing for all who live on earth and that fellowship and liberty would dwell between them.
Im he'ach hazon netiacha, lo yisagoy el goy chere, ve'lo yinmedu od be'hlchmechama.
Establish soon the vision of your prophets. Nation shall not raise a sword against nation and they will no longer learn war.
B'naiem ha'ki kula v'adiotin la'itana, ve'ad gedolam ne'gu madonai ki eslach la'avonam, yulach t'chatem lo eska'om od.
And as it is said, for all of them will know me, from the smallest to the greatest.
Amen.
Okay, so council meeting for Thursday 25th June 2015 now open. Apologies, now I've got councillor Gallagher, I think you're...
Apologies, I have to leave in one minute to attend a funeral of a respected veteran of the Kreyer campaign.
Thank you, and councillor Paul Smith?
I hope to be back.
Yes, I'm leaving at ten past two to attend a urban cycle funding announcement in Rotorua. Okay, thank you. So I'll move for that, seconded by the deputy mayor, all those in favour? Any against? Carrie, thank you. Councillor McPherson has requested that he make a personal explanation, and I had said yes, that would be fine. So that's, I'm just checking, 3.6.9 of our standing orders enable a member to make a personal explanation with the permission of the chairperson, and such matters may not be debated. So councillor McPherson, I'm happy for you to do that, and I thought I'd allocate no more than five minutes.
Well, hopefully not that long, Your Worship, thank you. Worship and councillors, three weeks ago council met on a day, 5th of June, for an extended session of the 10-year plan deliberations. That meeting date was not advised until the evening prior and I was unable to be present. I arranged to have my apology put in, but in an unprecedented move, two councillors voted against accepting it. Another councillor asked across the meeting floor on the evening previous, what is so precious about tomorrow that councillor McPherson can't attend? For the information of that councillor and the other two who voted against accepting my apology, what was so precious was that I was leaving early the next morning on a short five-day overseas holiday with my family that had been carefully planned in early March to avoid any council dates. It was a holiday that had been planned and booked to include my partner and both my sons, just prior to my son Nicky's death on 9th of March, and designed at that time to give him something to look forward to. My family decided to go ahead with the holiday anyway, to perhaps help us with our grieving process. For the benefit of those councillors, that's why my apology was lodged. In this council, I've never voted against accepting apologies from councillors, even if they are on cycling holidays in the south of France or on cruise ships with their mother. Everyone is entitled to some personal time off for whatever reason, and this should not be questioned, in my opinion, by other councillors. I've also been criticised in the media recently by another councillor for not attending some meetings since late February. My son was admitted to hospital after a suicide attempt on the 17th of February, and I'm afraid my priorities were most definitely with my family for much of the last three months. In fact, my son had been ill and in and out of hospital for the last two and a half years, and I won't apologise to anyone for putting him first when I've had to. The actions and comments relating to my absence earlier this month and meeting non-attendants mark a new low, in my opinion, in the behaviour of elected members. It's a slippery slope that elected members should be very careful about going down. Thank you.
Okay, thank you councillor McPherson. Right, next item on the agenda is to confirm the agenda, so I will move it as it is presented, seconded by the deputy mayor, all those in favour? Any against? Carrie, thank you. Any declarations of interest? No? So we now move to the public forum, and we have one speaker in the public forum, Jason Wade?
Mr. Mr. Wade.
Oh, right, thank you. And this speaker will be familiar to councillors from Hamilton Operatives and also from the Clarence Street Theatre Trust, and this relates to an item on the agenda, item nine.
Your Worship, Mr Wade has zipped back to go and collect his phone, and I'm afraid it was my advice, I thought he was talking about what time the actual item he was speaking to would be on, rather than what time the public forum. So I'm wondering if it's at all possible to...
So what we might do then is, we might give him, if you like, the public forum opportunity just before we take that item, if that's what he's been told.
Yeah, that would be wonderful, thank you.
All right, that's fine, thanks very much. Okay, next item, there's no other speakers, but the public forum is there. Okay, so next item's item five, page five, which is the council minutes for Thursday the 28th of May, and I will move that those be accepted, and the deputy mayor is seconding those. Yes, councillor Mallot?
Thank you, Your Worship. Page 10 and page 11 regarding the Frankton Railway tyres.
Yes.
I think there's a contradiction, or it's not overtly a contradiction, but the bottom, second to last bullet point on page 10. Council does not have any financial liability.
Yes.
Contradicts, well I think contradicts the second bullet point from the top on page 11. Council paid $250,000 to move the tyres from the Frankton railways. If we had no financial liability, what's the $250,000?
I think there's a missing word.
Yeah, I know, pardon?
I think there's a missing word there, isn't there?
Could I talk to that one? Your Worship.
So that was a question that was asked by councillor McPherson, I think, about the ongoing financial liability, and so that was beyond the $250,000. Was there any further liability on council, if I recall rightly?
I think that's right.
If I can say, Your Worship, that was certainly the intent of it, so maybe the further...
The further needs to be added in there, doesn't it?
Yes.
So it would say council does not have any further financial liability, because we did have some discussions about whether the council would have to pick up anything else, didn't we? Yeah. Okay, so I think that needs to be inserted there. Any other discussion? Okay, I'll put the minutes, all those in favour? Any against? Carrie, now I see Jason's here now. Hi, Jason.
I'm sorry. So sorry.
That's okay. We're sort of moving forward, read me quickly. So we are happy to have you speak now in the public forum, if you'd like to do that.
You sure think that'd be lovely, thank you.
And then you can wait for your item if you want to, so...
Okay, great.
You can take a seat, and we allocate three minutes for people to speak in the public forum, so the floor's yours, thanks.
Very good, thank you. First of all, good afternoon, Your Worship, the mayor, fellow councillors and the city management team, on behalf of the Clarence Street Theatre Trust, which they put their apologies in this afternoon, unfortunately they haven't, they've been able to make this meeting due to business commitments, but I'm Jason Wade, today representing the trust. Many hours have gone into listening and consulting with a wide variety of community groups who currently use, would like to use the facility at Clarence Street. We believe we've identified what needs to happen and are in the true belief that we will make it happen. The trust itself is made up of accountants, solicitors, theatre practitioners and business leaders, given Clarence Street have the very best governance and professional advisory resource possible. We're delighted to have Richard O'Brien as our patron, and just recently he expressed his excitement in getting the things up and running and looks forward to working and giving his full support. We have spoken with various community funders and found new and wonderful possible other revenues which we are confident that we can not only survive with the current funding available, but also improve and increase the viability of the theatre and its performance and community engagement outcomes. Our business model is sound, and while we are under no illusion that it will be easy, we will make it work. We anticipate surprises, we anticipate the unknown, but we relish the challenge that this will bring and the reward it will deliver to our city. We are fortunate to have the guidance and support of One Victory Trust, enabling us to learn from their knowledge and apply it to our model. We believe that we will build a strong relationship with the meteor, orchestras, choirs, schools and theatre organisations, and together we will be able to grow the performing arts. The trust would like to thank the guidance and support of Creative Waikato, in particular Sarah Nathan. Thank you to Sean Murray and his team for the support and ploughing formation to us to enable a smooth transition. We'd like to thank all those that have supported the trust in its formation and strategic goal setting. And finally, once again, the trust would like to thank all our elected members for their foresight, support and confidence that we can make this a success for our city. Clarence Street Theatre Trust hope you see fit to ratify your earlier motion to gift the Clarence Street Theatre to the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. I'll just see if there are any other, any questions for you? No? Thank you very much for that summary, very good, and I have to say Mama Mia is absolutely outstanding.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much. All right, the next item on the agenda is reported, item six, page 13, and this is a report on the classification, naming and reclassification of reserves, and we've got Lance here to answer any questions on the report. So Lance, is there anything you want to highlight on the report?
I think it's reasonably straightforward, Your Worship, just to highlight that the naming of reserves, there's seven extensions to current reserves, and there's basically two new reserves which we're asking council to approve the names of. And obviously, the report outlines that the, they've already been created and vested under part 10 of the Resource Management Act, so this is under the Reserves Act around the classification, that's really something that council has to do. The naming is guided by our road reserve and park naming policy. The other matter in the paper is just around the classification of Endley Park, just to ensure that the Reserves Act classification we have for where the community centre is is consistent with what the zoning, which is in the district plan, allows the community centre activities to happen there, and just in light of we're carrying out a community facilities review, it ensures that there are a wider range of options for that facility to be used for in the future as we work through the end of that review and look at what we do actually use that community centre for in the future. Happy to answer any questions, Your Worship.
All right, thank you. Questions? Yes, councillor McPherson?
Yes, thanks Lance, just in relation to the bit about Endley, that same issue has been a problem in the past at Elliot Park, Western Community Centre is cited on that, and I've just been told in the last day actually that there's an issue, potential issue, on Ashus Park with the Pukiti neighbourhood house slash centre, whatever its official title is. I'm just wondering whether staff have looked at all the parks and reserves where those sort of independent community facilities are placed to see, I mean, I totally agree with what you're trying to do for Endley, so, but I'm wondering whether it needs to be also looked at for other parks?
We've been doing that, councillor McPherson, through, working through that community occupancy policy through the review, as Linda and Sally's teams work through that, some of these matters have come to light, so there's a couple of tidy ups. This is one mainly around the Reserves Act classification, I think one of those ones that you're referring to is more around the, what the district plan allows and around whether they need a resource consent or whether or not there's existing use rights, so there's sort of two aspects to it, and I think this aspect is around the Reserves Act, so, but Dee and Sally are here, so I don't know all the detail around the one at Ashus Park, but that's something that we are looking at as we work through those leases that come through to the finance committee and to council, and we'll bring, but my understanding is that they're very few and far between, generally across our parks, our classifications are in line with our district plan and the classifications are appropriate for the activities that are actually happening on those pieces of land.
Okay, I think the problem has been when there's been non-sporting activities happening in buildings on the land, so it's presumed, like you say, there's not many of them, few and far between, so maybe it's a matter of getting our district plan and the Reserves Act aligned everywhere.
Yes, yes, so we've been working through that, and I can give you assurance, that will happen. The other thing is our staff are in their ongoing relationship management with the occupiers of our parks or premises. We give advice on what they can and can't do in a friendly way, just to make sure that they don't forget the parameters and then go and do something on them where we find out a bit later on it ends up being a difficult situation for everyone, so we're trying to avoid that by being a bit more proactive going forward. Thanks.
Okay, councillor Mallot?
Thank you. I just, I think it was the last council meeting, someone in the public forum, I think it was the public forum, raised a concern about the naming of Hari Puki Park.
No, I think you're referring to councillor Mallot, I think you received an email, which I got as well.
Is that what it was? Just remember, triggers...
Some real estate agents in that area have been naming that piece of land which was purchased in Landbank some years ago by council as...
Meadow Vale, is it?
Meadow Vale Reserve. So our practice is that Hari Puki Drive, and our naming policy is reasonably generic and pragmatic, it's not terribly detailed on what we can and can't do, it's normally around street names and the developer has a lot of influence in that. We try to be reasonably pragmatic around these sorts of things, so, and we believe that Hari Puki Drive and then Hari Puki Reserve there is a logical naming and matching with the street name as well, and also, you know, as the report says, it recognises a significant contribution that Hari Puki made to the city and its relationship with council.
And I think I agree with all that, so is there just some confusion about, some people have been calling it another name that they...
Yeah, colloquially, so what we're doing is, Sally's just, and her team are just working...
It's never been called that before, Meadow Fitfield?
No, it's just a, it's just a bit of a name that's come up with some people, we don't think it's all that widespread, so we're very careful around correcting any perceptions around those sorts of things.
So then to correct that, you put signs up and then people will just...
Yes, we will, and the other thing we've discussed previously, I think after the Manganiti debate several years ago, is actually just working with Brian's team around Lim Reports and things like that, just so that people are aware that there will be a sports park and that it will be named, have a certain name.
Okay, thanks councillor Leary.
Thank you. Lance, you've got down here on page 16, bullet point, oh, number 30 there, a future signage and mapping as budget allows, given the, and it's nice to see some names that, although you see Hari Puki Drive, but nice to see like Junction Reserve in Frankton has some connection with Araway. So are you planning more than just a sign, are you planning a storyboard as well?
Yeah, that's firstly, obviously the signage to name the park as budgets allow, and I think there's been a discussion around, you know, interpretation across the city of telling the stories of our city, especially on the lands that we look after, that would be the intention long term, that we do have, and we already have some along the River Trail at certain places, telling the stories of Ewe and also European culture as well, so that would be the aim to do that. I think those are sorts of projects that we can work with local community groups, businesses and look for external funding on those, so we'll do some of that within our current budgets, but obviously those are limited.
Because I mean, surely doing it, doing it at the point of putting in a sign means you don't have to go back and do things again, surely it's cheaper to do it all now?
Sometimes the naming signage is quite different to interpretation signage, the way that it's mounted and that sort of thing, so I think the first thing is, especially in those growth areas, is to actually, even if we put in some temporary signing around, what is the actual land, so we don't end up with a whole lot of myths around what the land's for and will and won't be, so if it is going to be a sports park, I think we, even if we put a core fleet sign up to actually let people know that's the case, so we don't end up with any hiccups later on. But yes, take your point, and I'll get Sally to look at, you know, can we marry the two up and do it in a more cost-effective way?
Any other questions? Yes, councillor Yoma?
Just a short one. Just on that Junction Reserve, to me it's only 519 square metre, on the map too it seems it's in the middle of, is that that whole reserve in Queen's Ave, and just is just a little part of it?
Yeah.
Or the whole place?
It's what we call a pocket park, and it's in a very small pair of trousers.
Medium-sized sections.
Yeah, yeah, so it was part of the subdivision there, and we negotiated that with the developer there, and it was something we were trialling around, with intensification was trialling pocket parks and things like that, so...
That was part of Andrew Yeoman's development, wasn't it?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Sorry, Your Worship, just a follow-up question, is that then open to the public? Because that smack-bang in the middle of all of those, of the development, I thought that that tiny, minuscule pocket park was just for the development, I mean, Joe Public can't see it from the street, can they?
They can't see it from Queen's Ave, but if they go into the subdivision, they can actually access it, so it is publicly available, yes.
As part of driving the amenity value of that medium density...
That's correct, so anyone can go there, generally the local residents would use it more than other people, so...
Okay, no other questions? I'll move the recommendation on A. Can I just check however at E, is there a date by which you will report back? Can we insert a date there to give you some...
Just check that with Sally.
E, 8E.
30th of September, Your Worship.
So we'll say that staff will be to the council meeting in September? Okay, so with that addition, I'll move the recommendation on eight, seconded by the deputy mayor, are there any debate on this? No? Okay, I'll put the motion, all those in favour? Are there any against? Okay, Carrie, thank you.
Thank you.
Right, the next report is item seven on page 26, and this is a report on a request to increase membership of the Hamilton District Licensing Committee. Brian, you're speaking to this.
Yes, thank you, Your Worship. Look, the report's pretty straightforward, basically we've probably undercooked the membership a little bit for the workload, and we've reviewed the sort of work rate and the capacity of that committee. What's happened is that there's a small group of people and they do get called on quite frequently, and we're struggling a little bit to make sure there's a quorum, and at the request of the chair, we're seeking some additional members, two additional members for that committee, but self-funding, Your Worship, and it's operating pretty well, there's a process there of selecting people, there's quite a clear process to be followed by the Ministry of Justice, and we evaluate those appropriate candidates and bring them through with the recommendation to council for those appointments.
I'll move, Your Worship.
Right, I've just got a question for councillor Mallot, and, oh, right, okay, and can I just, just to go before I go to councillor Mallot? Can I just check, I note, just in terms of ratios with actual commissioners, so is it your intention perhaps to ensure that we actually have the commissioner training when you're recruiting here? Because I just noticed total membership versus commissioners in paragraph 15 compared to others, because you need a commissioner for certain things, don't you, so...
What we're hoping is we will pick up some people that are already fully operating, functional.
Yeah, okay, right, so councillor Mallot, you had a question?
No, I was just going to do what councillor Winston...
Councillor Wilson has moved.
I have got a question.
And are you seconding that, are you?
Yeah, I'll perhaps second that.
Okay, so councillor Pesco?
I've got a question before the motion, and that is, on table 15, are we comparing the same number of decisions over the same period? It just seems to me a little unusual that we start off with 18 months and 14 as being the number of decisions since November 2013, and then we start comparing it to a number of other areas. Are we talking about the same 18-month period? Because down under Christchurch, you've got that split up between 2014 and 15, even though our time process started in November 13.
Yeah, I think the purpose of that really was just to get a bit of a comparison of how we were travelling relative to the rest of the country. I think you notice from there that the number of hearings that our committee has had is probably relatively high. I've had discussions with councillor Pesco on this, and undertook to follow up with a meeting with the chair of our District Licensing Committee, which I have done, and I'm very satisfied, Your Worship, that we're running a very tidy ship, that the act is being followed very closely, it's highly respected in its operation by the agencies that are involved, and we did do a little bit of a ring around the other metros just to understand their operating procedures, and it did appear that they had been taking quite a light approach, particularly to special licences and the views that we had back that they were moving quickly to comply with the full requirements of the new legislation.
So that just follows on with my next question, are we, and you might have already partially answered that with the last comment, but are we unreasonably restrictive on what we're doing in this area compared to other areas? And are we, are we adopting the law, I want to use the word more carefully, but are we adopting the law more restrictively than other areas are? Because there is a lot of antidote evidence and comment out there in the marketplace that our liquor licensing, particularly for special events, is quite restrictive compared with other TLA areas.
Yes, thank you, and that was the fundamental reason for a discussion with the commissioner. Now, I don't believe that is the case at all, and we did explore that in quite some detail. The act's very clear on what's required, and a lot of the problems we've had, if they can be considered problems, are really that the timeframe under the act to submit applications hasn't really been followed too well in the Hamilton situation. So what we've been moving towards is a lot more education, particularly for applicants about the timeframes under the act, and make sure they get their applications in time so they can be processed initially.
Okay, thank you. Councillor McPherson? Okay, thank you. Councillor McPherson?
Yes, my question is following a similar line, just looking at the number of hearings in Hamilton compared with elsewhere. Hearings are the, I imagine, the time-consuming thing where it's difficult to get a quorum, because you need three, yeah. And we've got roughly twice as many as the other cities per head of population, if not more. And the hearings are not because we've decided that. Am I reading this right, because someone's objected?
Yeah, it could be if someone's objected, if it's contested in some way.
Yeah, yeah, and some of that's by the officials, from the police and so forth.
Yes, it could be from the council's liquor licensing, people from the police, or from an affected member of the public.
So councillor Pesco's question about whether we're adopting a more rigorous attitude, to paraphrase him, would seem to, we're certainly, I'm not saying that we're adopting a wrong one, but is it not obvious that we're adopting a more rigorous one?
And that's exactly why I had detailed discussions with the chair of the committee to explore that. And after that very detailed discussion, whether, I'm very satisfied that our committee is operating very appropriately, they're following the law as intended, and they're doing the job that council asked them to do.
So if we're following the law as intended, then perhaps the others are not yet? They haven't come up, I mean, because I can't see why there's such a discrepancy between, in that area, between us and them, because it's like resource management things. If you're putting something through administratively that doesn't require a hearing is a breeze compared with a hearing in terms of the time and resources needed?
There's probably a little variation across the country. It's been quite new legislation, and probably different jurisdictions have, you know, found their own way going forward. But like I mentioned, we did contact some of the others, and the feedback certainly to me is that they are, all the other councils are taking a much more rigorous approach to the administration of the legislation, which has always been required. And I did, like I say, had a very forthright discussion with the chair, and I explored in detail whether we were being a bit overzealous, what the requirements of the legislation were. And I can assure you that I think we're being very well served by the committee we've currently got.
And the licence fees, finally, they cover the costs of all of these hearings?
Yeah, and they're set, you know, they're set across the country.
That's right.
Per day. So at the moment, it's probably, with the legislatively set fee, it'll probably be okay for the first couple of years. And then whether it keeps up with the demand will remain to be seen. But so far, we're staying within the budget.
So, but that fee doesn't depend on whether you have a hearing or not, it's just a licence application fee? Or is there a hearing fee on top of that?
There are set fees for the whole liquor licensing process.
So someone that's got less hearings, a council's got a lot less hearings per application, is obviously making a profit if we're just covering our costs?
Well, they wouldn't be spending as much money on hearing fees.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, councillor Leary?
Thank you. Just to be clear through the GM, so the decisions you've got on table on point fifteen there, one thousand and sixty-seven decisions, those are the decisions that only the commissioner can make, and the commissioner is the chair, is that right?
They are the total decisions that have been made by the liquor licensing commissioner. So, and, you know, the vast majority are made by the commissioner alone. But where a matter is contested, it has to go to a hearing. And it has to have a quorum of three people to hear it.
Yes. So, but there's only thirty-five hearings over eighteen months, so that's only two a month.
Well, that's right. And like, the purpose of the table really was just to give a sense of workload. And with some comparison. So it's not as if we have a, you know, a totally disproportionate number of hearings. The guts of it is that if someone objects, then it's got to go to a hearing. The flexibility under this Act is not like it used to be under the old Act.
No, I understand all of that, but given that the decisions, the commissioner, the chair, is the only one that can make a decision on their own, the other, he or she can't give that workload out to the other committee members. The full committee has a hearing when, as you say, when there's an objection. At the moment, as an average, there are only two a month, but you're asking for two new committee members. The workload seems to be in the decisions that the chair by themselves and only by themselves can make under the Act. We can't, or can we have an extra commissioner here determine decisions on their own? Because that wasn't my understanding.
Yeah, well, that might be the averaging provisions, but we could have a number of hearings all happening quite closely together. The issue that we've got here, that the chair's asked for some help with, is the workload for members of the hearings committee. And basically, there's difficulty in having, of the five people, having enough together frequently enough to be able to sit and have those hearings. So it's not that, on average, yes, they might only be a couple every period, but there's clearly difficulty that the chair's having when ringing around to see if enough people are available, because we're trying to get decisions through within the timeframe.
But, yeah, I guess my point is that if there are only an average of two a month, and the chair is having a problem getting those committee members together for two a month, then do we have, are those committee members committed enough? Or are they stretching themselves unnecessarily? It's just not really adding up for me.
I mean, I know where you're going, councillor Leary. What you're saying is that people have put themselves forward to be available, to sit on these panels. And if the chair is now finding difficulty in assembling them...
Twice a month, yes.
What's the issue here?
Yeah.
Well, I'm not sure whether that's, you know, it's more, I guess, we've got five. You look at the workload, five members is not a great deal relative to comparisons with the others. The people we've got are pretty busy, they're very skilled, and there's not going to be any extra cost in the process to get some more people to allow us to run it officially. So the question has come for some more members.
Any other questions on this? No? Okay, so there's a recommendation on page twenty-seven, paragraph nine. Moved by the deputy mayor, seconded by councillor... Oh, sorry. Oh, that's right.
This is clearly a very popular...
Excuse me, the time has just taken so long, I forgot. Gosh, there we go, lucky, lucky. All right, back to, we've got a mover and a seconder on the recommendation on nine. Has anyone wished to speak for or against? No? Okay, I'm going to put this motion, all those in favour. Is there any against? Okay, Carrie, thanks. All right, next one is item eight, page twenty-nine. And this relates to the online voting trial, which councillors will be familiar with. So Jude, this is, oh, Jason?
Yeah, on behalf of Jude, good afternoon, your worship and councillors. Just what we're looking for here is just to register our interest to participate in an online voting trial with the 2016 China elections. The government have asked through Local Government New Zealand that councils who wish to participate in the trial must register their interest by the thirtieth of June. We have also asked for, in the paper that we will come back to with regards to costs, which are still to be defined around the online voting trial. So we're not asking you to make a decision that we will definitely participate until we actually know further about costs. It's really just registering our interest.
There's a timeframe in which to register interest?
That's correct.
And your intention then is to come back for a final confirmation from us?
Of whether we want to accept it or not.
Once all the information's available.
That's correct, which will be later this year.
So councillor Leary, you had some questions?
Yeah, thank you. So just with the expressions of interest, and that closes the end of the month, how much information do we have to give for that expression of interest? Is it just simply a letter?
It's simply an expression of interest, just a letter, just an indication of support.
And how are LGNZ going to manage that selection process?
We're not too sure. That's actually going to be managed mainly with the DIA, it's the Department of Internal Affairs. We have had, Jews have been involved in many discussions and working groups over this online trial for the last two years now. What I would say is they are probably keen to trial a metro, so we do have a very good chance. But they weren't keen to trial something like Auckland to go with online voting. So I would say for Hamilton, and with regards to our size, the ease of our wards, only having two wards, we actually are seen as quite a good opportunity to do online trials.
It's just that I understood from the Associate Minister for Local Government's press release that she would be working closely with LGNZ and that they would actually be involved in the selection process. Is that not correct?
No, that is correct. That is still part of that as well.
So just to be clear, the Department of Internal Affairs are managing the process, but Local Government New Zealand...
Have been asked to select, yes.
Are selecting the councils to put forward for a final decision by Department of Internal Affairs?
Yes.
Okay, right. I think that answers your question.
Okay, yeah.
By the minister. The minister will make the decision.
Cabinet will actually make the call?
Right.
Yes.
Cabinet.
Thank you.
All right, councillor Mallett, you had some questions?
I was just going to move it.
Okay, moving it, seconded by... Councillor McPherson's seconding it. Okay, is there any debate on this? All right, I'm going to put this motion, all those in favour. Are there any against? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Jason. Next item, item nine, paragraph, page thirty-one. This is a report in relation to the approval of gifting to the Clarence, of the Clarence Street Theatre to the Clarence Street Theatre Trust. Thank you, Shaun.
Thank you, your worship. This report follows on from resolution of this council on the twenty-eighth of November last year for asking that management pursue a gift arrangement with the Clarence Street Theatre Trust that was for the Clarence Street Theatre itself, but along the same lines or as close to the same lines as could be achieved with that of the earlier gifting that we did of the Meteor Theatre. And certainly with the negotiation that we have had with the new trust, we have achieved that. I'd just like to note that the gifting of the Clarence Street Theatre is part of, or an outcome from the earlier theatres review, where we, through that review, had a concern of the lack of utilisation of the theatres that we had, three at the time. If this motion goes forward, we'll be down to one theatre, which has been our objective. The arrangement with the Clarence Street Theatre Trust, as I said before, is totally consistent with that of the Meteor Theatre and the One Victoria Trust for that. The only difference that is there is the, both, the Clarence Street Theatre does have an issue with the building in terms of earthquake strengthening work that's required on it in the near future, just as the Meteor Theatre did. However, the value of the cost or the potential cost of that earthquake strengthening work is less. And that is why the formula that's in the document is stating that the maximum payable would be no more than what we have awarded to the One Victoria Trust at two payments of $75,000, should it be required. And we have basically put in the term here where it's either twenty percent of the actual cost to a maximum of $150,000. And that is ready to reflect the lower estimated value of that work that's required in the case of Clarence Street. So I'm happy, your worship, to take any questions.
Right, thank you. Questions? Councillor Mallett?
Thank you. Page thirty-two, point number thirteen, last sentence. The trust cannot treat its arrangement with the council and the building gifting as a tangible asset with which to secure any debt funding. Just a bit of advice from someone. How do we actually ensure that happens? Do you put a covenant on the title or something?
Yes, in fact, the deed of gift has a clause, I think it's clause ten point one, which excludes their ability to assign any type of right over the property.
But even though that's got a, okay, yep, that's their agreement to us, but how do we ensure that no one in the trust, ten years down the track when they've forgotten about that, doesn't do it? So, because we'd want to make sure that we were protected always. So isn't the only way you can do that is putting something on the...
So the question...
Yeah, I know the agreement says you can't, the trusts are told they can't do it.
Correct.
But how do we make sure protecting our rates payers?
Yeah, so the question is, will you be registering an interest on the title?
Yes, we will, your worship.
And the answer is yes. Okay.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Just point seventeen, just confirming, is that the, so this is about the local body rates. Three thousand and sixty-nine, are they the capital rates or the land value rates?
They're based on the current rating system, so.
So that's still land?
That's what's been, yes, that's what's been charged at present.
Do you know if they change is materially? And do they know?
I'm sorry, I can't answer that question, and I don't think that they will have researched that either, to be fair.
Okay, I mean, it might not be, might be dilly-squat different.
I don't think it would be material, but that is something for us to check.
Okay. The Montana arrangements I mentioned in here, are there any cost implications for changing those arrangements?
No, none whatsoever. On either of the Montana or the Ticateic arrangements, both parties are happy to exit our current agreements.
Okay. And there's a, two point eight of the deed talks about, talks about earthquake works, which will be defined below. But I couldn't find them anywhere. And I thought I'd looked pretty well through the gift deed. And you just mentioned some formula just before, Shaun, so I don't know where you're getting that from.
Well, the formula that I referred to is what's stated in two point eight. If you look at line two, $150,000 or twenty percent of the total cost of the works.
Oh, yeah, okay. But is this anywhere where it actually defines what the works, okay, if you keep going, somewhere it says that the actual works that are required shall be defined. How do we define earthquake? Yeah, there you go, yeah. Cost of the works, brackets, that term being defined below. I tried to find, I couldn't find out what the cost of the works was. I mean, sorry, the definition of the works. So do we know what needs to be done?
Yes, we do know what needs to be done.
And is that detailed in...
It is not detailed here, as you say.
Probably, my...
Yes, I'm sorry, I'll take that on advice.
My layman's advice, I should put it in...
Yes, we have supplied the Clarence Street Trust with a report that we received from structural engineers on what would be required and a estimated cost. So they do have that information, but I think you are correct. This is something that we need to clarify in here.
That was a huge, was it Hughes? That was a huge Hughes report, was it?
Yes, I think so.
So if we refer to that here, that would cover it off, wouldn't it? So that everyone knew exactly what we're talking about when we said earthquake works. Okay, thank you.
Okay, the next I have is councillor Leary, then councillor Pesco?
Thank you, your worship. On page four of the deed, can you just explain to me, under D, the, what, in plain English, what the arrangement with Ticateic is?
We have an arrangement with Ticateic through the H3 Operation Four that covers all of our venue operations, with the exception of certain events that take place, such as the chiefs at the stadium. And Clarence Street is just noted as one of those venues within that agreement. So our agreement with Ticateic is to delete Clarence Street from our agreement as it currently stands. My understanding is that the Clarence Street Trust is entering into, or in discussions to enter into its own arrangement directly with Ticateic themselves.
Okay, great, thank you. And just two point seven down there, it says the donor will gift to the donor. I don't know, is this the final?
This is still in draft, but that has, yeah, that's a good point.
On two point eight, on the following, on the next page, it's talking about the $150,000, but in the report, it's $153,000? Is it not? No, it's not?
If you're referring to item fifteen in the report, where it talks about $153,000, that's the figure that we reported previously on the draft savings.
Yeah, no, you're right. So just to confirm then, that's a, over the ten years, the proposed LTP or the draft LTP, it's a two points, taking off the first year of the seventy-five and one fifty, it's about 2.6 million over the ten-year savings?
That was a calculation that we made in the November report, bearing in mind that the LTP that is currently in draft does not include this actual gift action.
Yeah, and that is funded predominantly, I mean, there's CapEx in there, but that's predominantly rate, so that will go back into the general rate.
Correct.
Okay. And then just last question, just on page forty-one of the deed. In E, provide the donor with a report within six months of settlement date and thereafter every anniversary. Does that report come to council? Or does that-
It comes to management at this stage. We haven't had a requirement, for example, for the reports from the One Meteor Trust to specifically come to council. It can, if you wish.
That was my second question, was that, is that the same arrangement with Meteor?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Councillor Pesco.
And I'm ready to move, sorry, when you're ready, your worship.
Councillor Pesco?
Yes, some of my questions have already been answered, but one in particular, I'd like to see a recommendation three D just changed a little bit to refer specifically to paragraph two point eight, so that rather than just say a payment of up to $150,000, that it actually state in a little more detail the fact that that could be limited to twenty per cent of whatever the earthquake costs actually pan out to be. Otherwise, it could easily get forgotten, and it may well be that we end up funding up with $150,000.
So councillor Pesco, that's a matter for whoever moves it.
Okay.
You know, you can just-
I'm just signalling that, I would like a little more detail in that for-
Councillor O'Leary signaled she wants to move it, so you can just talk to her and see what's what. So have you got any other questions?
No, that's it, thanks.
No? Yep, councillor King?
Could I move an amendment? So we'll just wait and see if there's any other questions. Has anyone else got any other questions on this, for the general manager? No, so councillor O'Leary, you're going to move, are you? I have a second, the deputy mayor. So just a couple of points during the questions, there was some discussion about including in the deed a schedule of the earthworks required, so perhaps that can be set in B, and so I'm tidying up with D.
Sorry, your worship, just to be clear, it's earthquake works, just-
Earthquake works, yeah.
Yeah.
And D, so-
Yeah, so my suggestion is that three D, with the consent of the mover, be reworded that council approves a payment of up to $150,000, or that limited amount specified in para two point eight of the-
Deed.
Of the deed, for the purpose of earthquake strengthening.
I'm happy with that, your worship.
Okay, so we'll change that wording to that. Councillor O'Leary's happy with that. And are you going to insert in B, approves the agreement with the inclusion of a schedule for the earthquake work? Right?
Yes.
Okay, so democracy manager, we've got those two extras, and perhaps just might want to pop it on the screen just so that everyone's clear. And deputy mayor, you were seconding that, are you happy with those wording changes? Deputy mayor, are you happy with those? Yeah, right. Now, you've got an amendment, councillor King?
Councillor O'Leary may be willing to put this in on recommendations. If not, I'll move the amendment. And I was thinking of E, and I'm happy to take feedback from the general manager on this, that a caveat be placed over the title referring to the, referring to this document, so we'll name that document and file, that can only be removed with a majority vote of council.
A caveat to do what? It'll be an interest, isn't it, to do what?
Not a caveat, yeah.
For the purposes of, is that the debt matter you were talking about?
It refers to a lot of things in here, but the debt thing is a biggie. I mean, there's nothing to stop the trust going off to the bank and putting a, and the bank suggesting that they will give the, they'll borrow the money and, by putting a mortgage over the property.
No, if you look at clause ten point one, that precludes them from doing that.
There's nothing- But I think the concern, general manager, is agreements are agreements.
Yes, correct.
But what is the legal instrument to notify all others?
Well, I think we notify the interest on, over the title.
Yeah, so you're suggesting E include that notice, or the council's interest, the deed's interest, you think of the words, is noted on the title?
Yeah.
That's what you want, isn't it? Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I just need to make sure that you are able to register an interest on the title based on that?
Yes, we can.
Can't just stick them on for any reason, you say?
No, I, fair enough, and look, my recollection is that I'm pretty sure we did that with the Meteor as well.
Pretty sure we did.
Yeah, quite sure.
Yeah. So just, we'll just get some words on E, and so councillor O'Leary, are you happy with that?
Yes, I am.
Deputy mayor, are you happy with that? Yes, so they're happy with the E, so that's, that covers your point? Okay, so we'll just get it up on the screen.
Excuse me, your worship?
Yes.
Can I have a question? Quick one while we're waiting for that? I just wonder, when that clause two point eight, because we're not going to give more than $150,000, so why we put twenty per cent in there? Because it could be less.
It could be less.
Because up to $150,000.
Twenty per cent would be less.
So you estimate $750,000 roughly.
This is the lesser of, Philip?
It's the lesser of, so.
Yeah, all right, thanks.
It's a deed, isn't it? Is it a deed?
Yes.
So I think B's got to say that the council approves the deed. I think E needs a bit more word.
I think it needs to refer to this document, and it needs to be dated.
Yeah. So Nicholas, what's the wording you'd normally use?
I would say something like, council annotate the certificate, record its interests in this matter.
Or interest in the deed, interest as recorded in the deed?
The deed.
Okay.
What it's interest is reflected in the deed.
I think it says contained, it's contained in the deed.
Contained.
Contained. Nicholas, is that, are you happy with that?
Yes, I think that's fine.
Should you put the date of the deed on it? Does the deed have a date?
You haven't signed it yet, have you?
Once it's signed.
We have it signed.
So no lands transferring, so?
No.
I mean, yeah, the bank will-
Pretty hard to do anything.
Yeah, without any interest noted, the bank will always come back to the land. So does that sort of reflect, yeah?
To change the deed would require a majority of vote of council, wouldn't it?
Yeah. Okay, so mover and seconder, are you happy with the words up there?
Yes.
Changing the deed would require consent from both parties, wouldn't it?
Hmm, contact. All right, any other questions on this? No, is it clear, Shaun?
Yes, your worship.
All right. Okay, so we've got a mover and a seconder. So does anyone wish to speak for or against councillor O'Leary? I've got it over you, then the deputy mayor.
Thank you. Look, I think it's a good outcome. The original theatre, I believe, was built in nineteen eighty-seven and was owned by the Hamilton Operatic Society way back then, I think eighty-seven was right. Ten years later, nineteen ninety-seven, it came back to council. Different landscape today. In the eighteen odd years that we've been managing the theatre, we have seen, and I'm talking about the theatres report that we did a couple of years back now, we have seen declining audience numbers. We also have only managed to get an average of about eighty days utilisation in a calendar year. That's not great. We are also facing, under our manage, or continued management of it, facing quite significant capital expenditure, because we've deferred that over, over time, like we have with many of our assets, unfortunately. And also, the other thing that struck me through that review was that we have one of the highest commercial rates in the country. Not good. Having heard all of that, you might wonder why on earth the arts community are wanting to take over the theatre. But as we've seen with the Meteor Trust and their group, that by putting these kinds of things in the hands of the people that know it best, I believe success will come to them. They have better access to funding, they have the knowledge of what audiences want and what audiences enjoy. And I was also at the opening night of Mamma Mia with the mayor, and the house was packed, and it was a fantastic show. And I'm looking forward to seeing a lot more shows like this at Clarence Street. They will get better buy-in from the arts community, because the arts people will support the arts people. And again, we've seen that in the Meteor. So this puts the responsibility firmly on that community, and it's up to them to prove that it's successful. And I think it will be, and I think that this council has done and taken a number of steps to really put its, put its actions before its words. And we've done that with Meteor, we've done it with, hopefully we're doing it with Clarence Street Theatre. And of course, this will also give nearly $3 million back into the rate payer's pocket, which is a good outcome as well. So that's why I support the motion, and certainly hope that the majority of my colleagues do also.
Thank you. Deputy mayor?
Yes, thanks, your worship. Look, I'm delighted to support councillor O'Leary's resolution. This is a fantastic opportunity for the theatre community. It's a very experienced board when you review the CVs, and most of those board members I do know, and I think I have a great deal of confidence that they will drive forward. I would like to compliment the trust with the assistance from Creative Waikato and Chris Williams for the work it's done in putting the proposal to us, a very compelling proposal and difficult to turn it down. I think what's pleasing to me is that this comes hard on the heels of the Meteor success. And I remember the discussion, and perhaps the concern, when we were deciding to turn over the Meteor Theatre. And I think when you can look back now, you can see the success and the passion and the energy behind that organisation. But there is one thing we just need to consider in all of this, and that is the support around the table in the debating chamber, and I hope that this resolution gets that. But it also triggers for me a bit of a rethink around the Riverley Theatre, because it's the third theatre group in a different scenario, where they own the theatre and we own the land. And I just want to make councillors aware that we need to be even-handed in the ongoing dealings with Riverley Theatre. So I just would like to signal that, your worship, that that is something we need to embrace, because if we proceed with this today as we should, I don't want to see another theatre group saying, well, we have not been treated in an even-handed way. So I urge councillors to support the resolution today. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other speakers for or against?
Yeah, oh.
Yes, councillor King?
Yeah, I just, firstly, Angela floated this idea about a year ago when we were on the way out to the Maraean Narwhaihe, and I think she sold it to everybody in the van by the time we got there, so well done, Angela.
Sounds like a secret meeting, in a van.
Was there a quorum?
Come on.
Also, I'd like to point out in clause fifteen of our report that the exit of council's interest in Clarence Street will generate a savings of $114,000 in net operating costs and $153,000 per annum in projected savings and capital expenditure. There's $300,000 a year savings by us gifting this theatre. I think this also clearly shows, again, that interested groups can run business, they can develop things, and they can do things far more efficiently, in a far more efficient manner, in a far better manner than what council can. So I think this is a really great outcome, both for the theatre group and for council, and for the residents of our city.
Okay, thank you. Right, any other speakers? Okay, councillors, so we'd better go to the board. Right, thank you. Thank you for coming along, Jason and Sarah, well done. Okay, next item is item ten, page sixty-six.
Thank you, your worship. Councillors, on the, at the meeting last week, the Business and Investment Subcommittee considered a proposal to sell the Begs Wiseman Building and resolved to do that. They, at that meeting, requested a little further information around the earthquake status of the building, which is included in the background section five of this report, together with the resolution that was passed at the meeting last week. Happy to take any questions.
Right, any questions on this, councillor McPherson?
Yeah, just off the top of your head, unless you know the detailed figures, Nick, the average return in terms of rental income, less expenses, that we're getting on this compared with what the return would be on the money from a sale, can you do a bit of a ballpark comparison for me?
Yes, so over its lifespan, well, since we've owned it, which is about twenty-one years, it's averaged around about the seven per cent mark. That fluctuates, of course, depending on whether it's fully tenanted or there are vacancies.
But that's, that would be the average, taking all of those-
Correct.
-fluctuations into account.
That's right. And the amount that we get on the invested proceeds would be around about five point six per cent, unless Paul can give us the current rate.
It's around about that, yes.
Yeah, five point six per cent.
So the last five years, would that be any different from the seven per cent average?
The last five years have been around about the seven point seven nine, seven point eight five, seven point seven four, eight point eight eight, and zero point five eight per cent. And then in the last period of extensive vacancy, it's a minus two point four per cent.
Because of lack of tenancies?
Correct, because of three of the four tenancies are vacant.
So your projection would be that we'd continue for a while with a lower than seven per cent?
Yes, yes. It's been a longer period of vacancy than I think we would have expected, but to be frank, there doesn't appear to be much sign of significant tenant interest in the building at this stage. What there is significant interest in is a purchase of the building, so we've had a number of approaches from parties who are interested in purchasing this particular property.
So going forward, have you got any projections about when the tenancy income would pick up above, you know, just in two numbers of years, pick up above, say, the current interest on, earned on the capital, if we had it?
No, I haven't. I wouldn't have expected it to have been as vacant for as long as it has been, and all the advice we received when the first vacancy occurred was that we would be looking at a period of vacancy of perhaps twelve to eighteen months. In fact, we're now approaching twenty-four months, and it could well be a further twelve to twenty-four months before the property is fully tenanted.
Okay, thanks.
Councillor King?
When did we buy the property, and how much did we pay for it?
We bought it in nineteen ninety-four, and we paid one point two two six million.
And what's the government CV on it now?
Look, I'm sorry, I don't have the government valuation. We do have a current market valuation, which I'd be quite prepared to disclose, however not in the open section of the meeting.
You don't have, you've got no idea what the government valuation on it is?
No, I'm sorry, I don't have that information at hand.
Deputy Mayor?
Two quick questions. One is the currency business. Is that on a month-to-month or was that a?
It's on a month-to-month, indeed.
Okay. And the second question relates to the marketing of the property through a public sale process. Does that include or exclude real estate companies that may introduce a party to you for purchase? Because it's around the question of commission.
Correct. It includes real estate companies that may introduce a party. And where a purchaser or potential purchaser is introduced by a real estate company, then obviously commission would be paid on that introduction.
Okay. And when does it go to market? If the vote is to sell today, as intended, this would be reasonably soon?
Yes. What we would envisage doing is we would envisage marketing it in a month's time, for about a month, and returning to council with the outcome of that process in September.
Councillor Mallot?
Yeah, just a question. What's the difference between a public sale process and an auction?
Well, an auction is a public sale process or could be a public sale process. What we're suggesting here is more of a tender process whereby we are not locked into selling it to the highest bidder. We can consider both price and the intentions of the purchaser for the property. That also gives council flexibility in terms of if at the end of the process we are not comfortable or not happy with either price or intentions, then we don't have to proceed. So it's a less stringent process than an option would be.
Okay. We've got a district plan that tells you what you can do everywhere and what you can't do and we have, that includes the CBD. Why are you not comfortable with simply allowing, as any other person in the CBD would have to do, is follow the overly restrictive district plan we've got and then living with that?
Look, that's a good question. I think the answer is, if we were weighing up two potential purchasers and one potential purchaser said, I'm going to redevelop the upper floor into, let's say for argument's sake boutique apartments, and I'm going to redevelop the lower floor into boutique retail, as against, say, a purchaser who might simply be interested in putting in three low quality retail options, then I think that the process that we're suggesting gives us the option to weigh those two regardless of the price.
But surely all we're concerned is the best price we can get and a viable use of the business?
Correct.
With all due respect, none of us around this table knows who's going to do better, a boutique retail business or a two-dollar shop, because we don't know the market, you know?
No, that's right. Look, I suppose the bottom line here is that the tender process rather than the auction gives us flexibility that we wouldn't otherwise have through the auction process.
Except you lose transparency. You know, it concerns me that, you know, we make decisions here and it's important that everyone can see the process that's gone through. And the, there is an, no, this is, just be careful how I say this, but there's an implication that if it's not an open process, well, there must be something going on, someone who knows, a member on council, someone, you know, anything like that. And it concerns me that we put ourselves in a position, I think we may put ourselves in a position where a potential transaction could be challenged or, not legally challenged, but scuttlebutt in terms of, okay, why did he get it? Because he didn't offer the best price, but he's got something that council wants or he supports a councillor or something like that.
For General Manager, did you want to respond to this?
Yes, your worship, if I may. Councillor Mallot, it is an absolutely transparent process that we are talking about entering into. The purpose of this paper was actually driven out of a discussion in the recent Business and Investment Subcommittee meeting that we had. And at that discussion, whilst we agreed the challenges we have with tenancy and income and so forth of the property and that perhaps this is a good time to exit, we also had discussed the fact that this building is in quite a unique site in terms of its location on the corner of Ward and Victoria Street. It's actually an attractive building, it has a characteristic and a personality that could add value to the central city if developed well and properly. And I guess the proposal that's before you is to give us the opportunity to think about what could be a good outcome for that building and in particular for the central city area as a result of the type of developer that comes in. It's no different in many respects to some of the development properties that we, where we own land and we are wanting to find the optimal development that will go against that. We're on that land that gives us a return but at the same time actually really adds significant value to the central city area. So it's just taking the opportunity to make that judgment call.
Okay. I guess I'm asking these questions because I'm not against sale, as you would expect that I'm not against, but I just, it just concerns me that we put that against the criteria. My goal would be to simply yield the greatest return we could for the rate payer and that anything that prevents that is, you know, does not do, does not help the rate payers, is not of the best interest of the rate payer.
Yeah, so I think councillor Mallot, you've laboured the point, that's your sort of, I guess, debate position. But can I just check? My understanding is that you're intending to bring back then, for approval by the council, the, is that, have I read that right?
That's absolutely correct.
That's what your report's saying? It's going to come back here anyway? Right, have I got that right?
Yes, you have.
Okay, okay. All right. Any other questions on this report? Yes, councillor King? Did you have a question?
Just one more, yeah? So what will come back to us then? Everyone who's put in an offer?
Correct. A summary position showing the offers, the prices and the intentions of the purchasers.
That's a usual process, isn't it?
Yes and no. If it's a reasonably clear-cut process.
It's a usual process and it's a process that's pretty much exactly the same as that that we're adopting for the pensioner housing, so.
Okay. Now, I've got councillor King, did you have questions, and councillor Pesco?
On the sale of the B&amp;Z building and the car park, did your department have any feedback to say that there were people out there who felt they had missed out because, and that feedback to say that they thought that they were possibly undersold and that there was far better opportunities had to be put to a national auction process, which becomes a worldwide auction process?
Yes. No, we didn't get any specific feedback from people who felt that they had missed out on the opportunity. I received some commentary back from an agent in Auckland who had previously, whose company had previously managed the portfolio, who was critical of the off-market nature of that transaction. But there was no specific criticism levelled at council in terms of people who had missed out or felt that they had missed out on that particular deal. But that's just that I'm aware of. I don't know if there were other approaches made to council in other areas.
Okay, councillor Pesco?
I was ready to move when the questions were finished.
Right, any other questions, councillors? No?
Sorry. Just a question through you, your worship, to councillor Mallot. Did you want to consider an amendment about an auction process?
Well, it's not, I'm, I think I'm happy about the public sale, which you said does not preclude an auction.
No, no. So the public sale process means that it can be an auction or it could be a tender or it could be an expression of interest or it could be some private treaty arrangement, but it's conducted publicly in the open market effectively.
Well, as long as there's transparency, but the thing I will, Rob's going to put the motion, I will be putting an amendment if I get support, just to delete Romans two.
Okay. So we've got a mover, councillor Pesco, is that you?
Thank you.
Who's seconding that? Councillor O'Leary is seconding that and you have an amendment, did you say?
Just an amendment that would strike Romans two out. So you go C, Romans two would be pulled out.
Okay, who's seconding your amendment?
I'll second it for him.
Right, councillor Wilson's seconding that. Okay, so, sorry, councillor King?
Just with questioning, so are we going to advertise this property for sale in traditional ways, through print, through the internet? This hasn't happened in the past and it's making me nervous and I'm going to feedback that people out there feel that we haven't given the market a fair go at the other properties we've sold.
Yes, is the short answer. Our intention is to advertise this as widely as possible.
Okay. All right, so councillor Pesco, do you want to speak to your motion?
Yes, just very briefly. I agree with the recommendation. I think council staff have used best endeavours to try to locate a key tenant for this property over a period of time. That has not been successful in finding that tenant and so I think the best outcome is, the next step in the outcome is to look at selling it. I understand from the discussions at the BNI meeting that there are a number of potential purchasers in the marketplace who have indicated an interest to buy, so offering it through this public sale process to me is the obvious way of bringing those multi-parties together as well as any others who might be interested out there to get the best possible outcome for the rate payers.
What's happening here? What are you speaking to? Because?
The motion.
He's speaking to the motion. There's been a motion, which is the recommendation innate, and he's speaking to that motion. And councillor Mallot has said he has an amendment and that is, as it is written here, with the removal of C, Roman U two.
So were you speaking to the amendment or the motion or?
The motion. He said he was speaking to the motion and he moved the motion.
So normally you're getting us to speak to both the amendment and the motion at once traditionally, so I'm just trying to get my head around what's happening here, are we?
So, so yes, that is how we are approaching it. Do you want to approach it separately and deal with the amendment first? Are you raising that as a question or?
It's best to do it together, as you are, right?
Yes. So, okay, so let me just clarify for you, councillor King. We have a motion and we have an amendment. In terms of the debate, councillors usually speak once and deal with whether they support the motion or the amendment. And that's because people generally feel that's how they want to do it. But if councillors wish to deal with the amendment first and speak, vote, and then deal with the motion, speak, vote, I mean, I'm relaxed about that, but I've had feedback that everyone prefers to deal with it wholly, as long as they signal what their position is.
Your worship, I'm not sure I understood what councillor Mallot's amendment was.
Deleting, so page sixty-seven?
I'll get them up on the board, I think.
Recommendation, C, Romans two, I would simply delete Romans two.
Perhaps if you put the motion up and the amendment up?
There it is, there it is.
We're clear. So it's the same, it's just one portion removed. Okay? And the mover of the motion is councillor Pesco. Can you just go back up to the motion, please? Oh, you haven't got there, no? And the mover of the motion is councillor Pesco and councillor O'Leary and that is as written in the paper. And councillor Mallot's amendment is to remove one portion of that. So councillors, we are in debate and we are speaking for or against motion amendment. Are councillors happy to proceed on that basis? Nodding?
Yep.
Yes? Okay. All right, so everyone's clear what we're doing? All right, so I have councillor Mallot as the next speaker.
Thank you. I support both positions. I support my amendment more. That's why I've got it up there. Because I think that council has proven over and over that we're a lousy developer and that we are too far removed from the market to know what the market wants. The best that we can do with our hands on our heart is to try and get the best price we can possibly get, allowing anyone to make an offer for the property. And as I said before, we have a district plan which has a multitude of conditions and red tape, et cetera, to make sure the development fits in with what we want. So I think we rely on the district plan to do that and any other sorting through of the, any other ranking of sale offers that, sorry, has to meet a threshold that meets our level of required development will simply drop the price. And I think that will jeopardise the rate payer's position when it shouldn't. So I will be supporting the amendment, obviously, however if that fails, I will support the motion.
Right, any other speakers for or against? Councillor King?
I'm supporting the amendment and I will support the motion. We paid one point two million for this property and over twenty years ago and I suspect that the government valuation wouldn't be much more than that today. You could have just gone out and bought residential houses and probably tripled your money. This is crazy. Once again, it just shows, yes, we've had a seven percent return at times, for the last twenty-four months, we've had no return. We've been told that it's possible for the next twenty-four months we'll have no returns if we keep the building. Interestingly, we own the building and it's in a rundown condition. We have the own building that we own, trying to transform our city, we haven't done anything I just think that we shouldn't be involved in property. We lose money for our rate payers by being involved in property, apart from the buildings that we occupy ourselves. And I will support both the motion and the amendment.
Right, any other for or against?
Okay, I'm going to speak against the amendment and for the motion. The thing that will affect price is the fact it's vacant and it's been vacant for some time and sadly, it doesn't look like it will have a tenancy for some time into the future. And that is what affects price most of all. The condition of the building will have an impact, but this is an opportunity for the council in the sale process to identify to the market quite openly that we are interested in what your plans are if you put an offer in for this building. And I think that's entirely appropriate. It is a building on a prime site in our city. This council has made a commitment to reinvigorating the CBD and so it would be entirely appropriate to signal to the market, we want to know what you want to do. Because that's going to be a factor in it. If there is that much interest in the property, which that's been signalled through staff, they're saying people are interested in purchasing it, then that indicates to me that they've got some plans. I would like to know what those plans are and that to me is a perfectly appropriate and in fact more transparent way of going about the sale, particularly when people are interested in what's going to happen in the CBD. So I would encourage councillors to include or continue to include that portion in the recommendation, which is what the motion represents, because it's just a chance to understand what the bigger picture is. Right, any other for or against? Okay, we're going to vote on the board and we're going to vote for the amendment first, which is the removal of a certain part of the building. The amendment has lost four votes, four and seven against. Right, thank you. So we're now going to vote for the motion. Set.
Angela?
Okay. Carried unanimously, the motion. Did yours register? Did councillor O'Leary's register?
Yes.
Okay, right. Okay, thank you very much. So councillors, that's the end of the public section, so I'll move to the public excluded, then we'll take a break for a couple of teeth. So I move that we go into public excluded. Seconded by councillor Wilson. All those in favour? Are there any against? Okay, thank you. So we'll break now for ten or so minutes.